Good evening and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, February 26, 2024. Thank you for bearing with us. It was picture night for the yearbook. So it took a few minutes and we're starting about five minutes late. Appreciate your patience. I'd like to thank you all that are here in person and those watching at home for joining us tonight. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Roll. Good evening. Roll call, please. Mr. Ifker?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Vera?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January 8, 2024. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Next, in consideration of the closed and public meeting of January 22, four and January 30, 2024, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any comments? Hearing no comments. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, good evening to our student liaisons, Leila Abanaja and Kanai James. Would you two please share your student liaison report with us?
Okay. So after five years on Presidents' Day weekend, West Orange High School was honored with the opportunity to play for Disney, featuring West Orange High School band students from ninth grade, concert band, symphonic winds and wind ensemble. Along with the marching bands' great performance throughout Disney, congratulations to the West Orange Band students. For a celebration on February 15 for Black Love, West Orange High School hosted its Black History Month Celebration, featuring Jubilee Choir, Boys and Girls, Step Team and Dance Honor Society. Thank you to all who came out to celebrate Black Love. And on February 19, the West Orange High School Step Team performed at the NJ Regional High School Stepping Championship in Newark, New Jersey, with the girls placing in fifth place and the boys dominating, having a dominating performance, placing first place. Come out in years.
On February 20, the West Orange Special Education Parent Advisory Council hosted an inclusive dance for at West Orange High School for all of the kindergarten to second graders, and they hosted many fun events for all of them to enjoy. There was a Newark NAACP, NAACP recognition on February 22, where Mr. Guglielmo earned this recognition for delivering exceptional Black History Month, Black history education, I'm sorry. Congratulations, Mr. G. February 23 is when they showcased History Month wax music at Redwood Elementary School, where they dressed up in costumes that embodied different historical characters.
Thank you both for that report. Mr. Moore, it's now time for your report. Would you please share your superintendent's report with us?
Thank you, President Rock. Very excited. To commemorate Black History Month, I call up to the podium our advisor for our student board liaisons, as well as the High School Confession Restorative Justice and Student Affairs Coordinator, Ms. Catherine Connors, to announce our student performers as part of our celebration.
West Orange School District celebrates our diversity all year long, but this month we focus on Black history. West Orange High School creates spaces throughout the month to celebrate Black culture. Today, we have some of the best here that represents West Orange for this evening. Our first, we have Michaela Rivera. She's a published poet who recently authored a book of poetry entitled, "Prayers to Catch a Butterfly." She's the president of the Black Student Union here at the high school and a student activist. She's currently employed with Georgetown Law Center on Gender Justice and Opportunities as a youth storyteller in residence where she produces original poems to accompany research done by the company on issues regarding marginalized girls. Michaela received the New Jersey Award for, in our education in 2022, and has been recipient of two other awards as well. Michaela also founded a nonprofit organization called Black Butterfly Rising, Inc., where she uplifts Black girls through community outreach. She's an advocate for diversity and inclusion and is a driven student leader who uses her art to cultivate social change, and in the fall, she'll be going to Spelman College. Here's Michaela Rivera, reading her own "My Words Are Like Seeds."
My words are like seeds. My words are like seeds, deep rooted in the hopes of generations before. I am unapologetic and bold. My voice, unwavering, authentic, amplified by echoes of my ancestors. I cannot be silenced. My pen is my instrument. I write symphonies of freedom, black ink tattooing white paper, like words etched indelibly in tree bark. My belief is in Black girl magic, Black joy and love. I speak of Black innovation, intellect and enterprise, unbreakable vows. My history shaped me this way. The twist and bend of my branches defined by my ancestral tree, the waves of my fro, the curve of my hips, the depths of my mind, born from the women before me. I come from my great-grandmother, Betty May. Born into a sharecropping farm, her dreams could not be deferred. Followed her North Star to a new life, her daughter's path was one of Black excellence, the fruits of great-grandma's labor. I come from brave women whose branches stretch to the heavens, reaching limitless blue sky, defying gravity and the weight of oppression, lifting me up to heights they could only imagine. I come from young lords. Grandpa was a revolutionary, dedicated to the fight against police brutality. My activism grown from his roots in passion and protest, his Boricua blood watering the ground from which I sprout. I come from judges, doctors and lawyers. I come from artists, educators and musicians. I come from resistance, pain and prosperity, my family tree. Grand and everlasting, weathering the most brutal of storms, growing stronger from the rain, we belong to a forest. We're surrounded by a woods of interconnected brothers and sisters grown from the same rich soil. Roots woven together, absorbing hope from the sun's rays, giving off oxygen and life, even in a world where they cut us down. Our fruits sold and made sweet in the mouths of thieves, their wealth built on our backs, their houses built from our flesh, our thriving orchards burned down by forest fires. Black Wall Street stripped barren and axed into only stumps. Nevertheless, the rings of our history ingrained in the wood cannot be erased. Our socas of life are never ending, seeds flourishing into trees of a new generation. Fields of Black progress will not be cut down. We will not be divided. We will not be exploited. We will burst through the clouds and into the heavens with righteous pride and gentle love. We will rise. Let the tips of our branches kiss the sky. Let us fill the earth with hues of black and brown leaves drifting to the ground, nourishing the soil until it's vibrant and lush. Remnants of our roots, proof of our presence, forecasters of our future. Hear my words and let them blossom into the dream of tomorrow, for my words are like seeds.
Next, we have our girls' step team, Optimal Precision. Under the direction of Michelle Brown, they're a group of girls who've come together to dance and to celebrate. Everyone on the team puts in their best efforts to produce great sound with their feet, their hands and their body. They are more than a team. They are sisters. They strive for good grades and an even better performance. Please welcome, Optimal Precision.
Hold on, Optimal Precision. I want to come see it. We're coming around the front.
Finally, we have our boys' step team, Absolute. Was formed in March of 2001 by a group of students and now under the direction of a former West Orange student, Ryan Usish. He, Absolute, is a brotherhood fostering self-expression through step and dance. Beyond its mesmerizing routines, it cultivates communication skills, social responsibility and academic excellence. Through community engagement, it instills confidence and character. With national recognition and top regional standings, Absolute embodies excellence onstage and off.
Hold on, students. Hold on. Hold on, students. Hold on. I just want to say a special thank you and just know that you're a shining example on what it is to be a West Orange Mountaineer. I'm proud to be a Mountaineer alongside you. I really appreciate you. Thank you so much for representing us and celebrating Black culture beautifully. Well done. And now, President Rock, I would like to recognize a distinguished member of our faculty. To do this, I've asked that Ms. Terri Trigg-Scales join us this evening. Ms. Trigg-Scales is a trailblazer herself, as she held the position of Assistant Superintendent of Montclair Public School District. She served as our district, served our district- She served our district in her role as a member of our Board of Ed as well as the spouse of our district's first black principal, the late, great Errol Scales. Please clap. Just like Ms. Trigg Scales, Mr. Errol Scales was ahead of his time. During the 1990s, Mr. Scales set out as a goal, making sure that there will be diversity in this district. His intention provided opportunities to promote and hire staff of color that reflected the makeup of our student body. Because of Mr. Scales, there's a Hayden Moore, a Lionel Hush. I'm very proud and happy to be a part of Mr. Scales' history as he has been a mentor to me as well. Ms. Trigg Scales, please come to the podium along with our Roosevelt Middle School Principal, Mr. Lionel Hush, and our Assistant Principal, Ms. Olivia Batantis. Please come up and acknowledge and celebrate the dedication of our retiring Roosevelt teacher, Mr. Albert Austin. Mr. Hush?
Being able to see yourself represented in respected, honored roles allows for children to dream and strive to accomplish the same. It allows them to aspire to do more, be more, additional typical roles to squeeze them in. In 1990, Al Austin became the third African-American educational professional in West Orange and as a result, became the beacon for many of the children in this town. Through his teaching, and I quote, "parents," he made my child love math again. Through his stories, he has entertained and mentored many. But through his presence, he has inspired countless children, showing them what a professional, caring, intelligent man of color looks like in a role you don't see many in. As Al ends his three-decade career in education, he has made his mark on the children of West Orange that has lasting effects in the lives they forged for themselves. My hope is that the blessings he has given to this community is returned to him tenfold in his next chapter in life. It has truly been a pleasure being a part of his journey, Al Austin.
I would like to speak about Al from a more personal and collegial staff role because I think that Mr. Hush really spoke on behalf of your tenure and the influence that you've had over students and families. But you have influenced the staff greatly at Roosevelt. And while I am rather new to West Orange Public Schools, as we all know Essex County is a small place. So Al happens to live next door to my daughter's godparents. So I have been able to get to know Al for the man that he is outside of Roosevelt, which is a man full of integrity. He is a family man who I consider a 21st century Renaissance man because besides being a phenomenal math teacher, Al is an inventor. He is trademarked. He's working on his second trademark. He is a phenomenal gardener. He is a phenomenal chef. He is a phenomenal husband and a phenomenal father. He is a man of great faith and he is someone who, as we honor pioneers this evening, I consider a trailblazer. When I think of myself as an educator of color, I think about integration in public education. I think about those like Al who set the path for us. You being one of the first, not only allowed for the amazing people who have come right after you, but people like me as well, who are able to come to you as a mentee, someone who has been able to be encouraged by you. And your spirit, your presence, and the impact that you've also had on your colleagues is tremendous. Your presence will be greatly missed, but I also know that we will do our very best to make sure we keep the legacy alive that you have imparted on Roosevelt Middle School and our community. I thank you for the brief but wonderful time that we've gotten to share together. And I'm encouraged. I'm encouraged for your future and I'm also encouraged for the future of West Orange Public Schools because of you and others before you. We now have a phenomenal model of diversifying our staff and also setting our sights on excellence always. And I think that you provided us with a great model of that throughout the year. So I thank you. I thank you for demonstrating also that being a pioneer and a trailblazer is being a well-rounded Renaissance man. And I truly believe that's what you are. So thank you, Al.
This is such an honor. I thank you, Mr. Moore, for asking me to do this. And I'm doing it on behalf of Errol. That's what I'm thinking of. Because I remember how excited he was when he came home and talked about the new hire because that was his mission. And with him being a first, he was so excited and so pleased and proud that you were joining the West Orange family. And so it's my honor and on behalf of Mr. Moore and the board, this reads, "Outstanding Achievement Presented to Albert Austin, Distinguished Educator, Mentor, and Role Model as Recognized by West Orange Board of Education on this day, February 26, 2024, on behalf of Brian Rock, Board of Education President and Hayden Moore, Superintendent of Schools."
I first would like to say thank you to the school district, the parents, the leaders, the community, the spirit, all that has made my life possible in this capacity. I'm incredibly grateful for this opportunity to serve because the first thing I did in this town was to serve, to follow, to listen, and to act according to the job that had to be done. I'm just thankful. I'm grateful. And this moment is just absolutely incredible for the things that I have seen, that I have experienced, the growth that I have seen in the children, the growth that I've seen in my coworkers, how they have affected me. And I will miss this opportunity. But this is just a change of assignment. And I want to give a special thanks to Errol T. Scales for being the educational leader and mentor to me at Edison Middle School when I first came as the first educator in that building in the history of the school. The two of us served as ambassadors to the town, paving the way for what exists now and being there as a foundation for all that shall follow. It is for that reason that I'm thankful to the District of West Orange, the District of West Orange, the town where the light bulb was invented, to provide light. And here at this time, the light of education and diversity will burn forever. For that, I'm thankful.
I just want to thank everyone for taking time out to join the meeting this evening and congratulate Al on his retirement. Al's consoling a few people. He's really going to be missed. Al, I just want to say to you real quick and before you take more pictures, I just want to thank you and let you know that I salute you and thank you for all that you've done. You're well deserved. And again, like Olivia eloquently said, we will not forget the foundation you have set. Thank you. Since our HIV report for President Rock, our HIV report since our last board meeting, we've had one HIV investigation throughout the district. I reviewed the summary and the investigation and it's been determined as unfounded. I concur with the findings presented by the Anti-Bullying Specialist. And that concludes my report for this evening, President Rock. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. And congratulations again to Mr. Austin. As Ms. Trigg Scales would say, "Welcome to the club where every day is Saturday." Next up, we have committee reports and comments from board members.
Thank you, President Rock. Just a few things. First of all, I had the pleasure of attending the Black History Month celebration. I enjoyed the poetry, the dance, everything. And hopefully next year, there'll be even a greater turnout. But it was really a special night and I'm glad that I was there. The second thing is that in the coming weeks, I hope to, I think several of us are going to take part in the Read Across America event. Looking forward to that. And then the last thing was, as a parent of a special needs child, I'm addressed very often from other parents with their issues, sometimes complaints about what's going on in the system. And finally, I said, you know, I'd like to have a meeting with Mr. Moore and with the Acting Director of Special Services. So Mr. Moore arranged that meeting and I really appreciate that. And really, leading up to the meeting, I spoke with some parents and I said, "This is your chance. I'm one of you. Tell me what the problem is and we'll see if we can fix it." And to my, I wasn't surprised, but I was relieved. The issues are not, you know, the teachers. They love the teachers, the services. I wish we had more of this or that, but everybody's very happy with the quality of education. The issue is one of the most important, but one of the easiest fixes, which is, "We need better communication." That's what they told me. So I shared that with Mr. Moore and Ms. Salvino about there's been a little bit of a turnover in terms of leadership in the program. And I was very, you know, pleased with how the meeting turned out. And I'll let Mr. Moore take it from there. But we all care about special needs children here. There's no doubt. I can tell you from our private meetings. But I can tell the parents that you don't have to feel like, you know, you're on one side and the other kids, we're all in this together. Everybody cares. If you're not getting the answer you need, there's a, what we call a chain of command you should go through. That's the quickest way. But if you're having problems, the Special Services want to hear from you. So don't be shy. And any issues, I feel like there's really a receptive ear here on the board and with Mr. Moore. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ippi. Any other comments from Mr. Stevenson or Ms. Vera?
Thank you, President Rock. I just want to commend the students who came out tonight and shared their talent and their commitment to our community, the commitment to celebrate Black History Month. I want to acknowledge our former Board President, Terri Trigg Scales, for being here tonight and presenting as a trailblazer, Mr. Hush, and the faculty of Roosevelt to celebrate Mr. Austin. So just wanted to make those comments. We should never take lightly those who trailblaze and set a course and lay a foundation and become an example and then become exemplars for how excellence should be conveyed to our community and to our students. So thank you for coming tonight.
Anything, Vice President Vera?
No, right now.
That's okay. Thank you.
I embrace my, I will say happiness and basically I really, the performance of the students, that's awesome. You know, it's almost, I can see the kind of work they are doing it. And you know, basically, I say, this is the way we support our young students and not the teachers who are dedicating the time to, you know, to work with the students. That's the only way that we can save our kids. Being they are into what they really like to do. And you can see the expressions they have. And I can say right now is definitely I will be part of a couple of celebrations on March. And you know, to celebrate that because this is what we really need to celebrate. When they see adults participating, they are put more effort into the kind of work they are doing. And teachers and administrators, they are happy to see that. You know, basically, I was like, oh my God, this is amazing, amazing. And you know, it's to be part of the celebration. So Austin, basically, I remember Mr. from Edison when my daughters were there and he was amazing, amazing person, always ready to talk to the parents, you know. I feel happy and, you know, I can say I was almost ready to cry because it's some spirits that I'm having right now. And we are not going to put time in to celebrate with the students and the teachers and with Mr. Austin. Congratulations.
All right, for my Board President's report, I want to share and highlight some news at a Liberty Middle School in celebration. Students and staff wore colors chosen from the African kente cloth, red to represent- red to represent power and spirit, green to represent growth and spiritual renewal, yellow or gold to represent wealth and royalty, and black in honor of Black History Month. Liberty recently implemented a young men's mentorship program named SOUL, and our multi-lingual learners in grades seven and eight will be taking a trip to the West Orange Public Library on March 12, 2024 to get library cards and a tour of the new public library. Finally, I just want to take a second to mention Chris Kuznuski, one of our students who earned his Eagle Scout Award recently. Mr. Guerrero, the principal here, and I were honored to attend his Eagle Court of Honor and see him awarded with that. Next, we will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record, then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Lewis Cottle. I reside 12 Randolph Place in West Orange, New Jersey. My son, Kayon King Cottle, is a student at Betty Magdalena. He loves his teachers. He loves going to school. He has grown tremendously. Our family is extremely proud and grateful for the teachers, the administrators, and just the support that we received. However, there's been an issue with transportation. Transportation, I mean, I didn't know that there was any other forum to go to, to speak to. But I'm glad that you mentioned it, so I know where to go in the future. Nevertheless, we've been through our third bus company. And it's a little bit difficult, given that we're working parents. I work 6:30 to 3:00 p.m. with the Department of Veteran Affairs. I am a veteran. My banner is on. Excuse me. My banner is up. So I not only live, love, and I serve, but I just would like us all to be a little bit more cognizant of the issues that parents have. And transportation is one of them. And I hope that, you know, it is addressed today or in the near future.
Yes, transportation has been a challenge. There, we are working on it. We have experienced a little bit of a challenge in terms of shortage of bus drivers, which has hurt the routes, which has delayed. I put out a letter to the parents. When I learned of some of our bus drivers were going to be sick, I tried to put something out myself. And I usually don't put out a transportation letter as there is a department. And vendors outside of West Orange that serve us for transportation, so they usually do the communicating. But I know that my parents are having a difficult time with it. I'm aware. And I'm glad it's okay that you brought it here because it gives me a chance to let everyone know I'm aware. So thank you. And I am aware, I cannot promise you perfection just yet because we need to seek a different solution. But we're having a meeting right on Thursday, and we're bringing in, and we're going to try to seek a solution. Thank you to you and our parents for being patient as we try to resolve our transportation issue. But full transparency, we're having a little bit of a challenge with it as we're trying to improve on it now. But soon, I promise you, or call my office, and I will try to help. Of course, special services is where to go first. But I don't want you to feel not listened to. And I will tell you any update or status report I have in terms of that. But please be assured that that challenge of transportation is being addressed. Unfortunately, we have not had a solid solution because the options and opportunities haven't been there for us to do so. But I promise you that that is forefront of my mind as it is our business administrator. We will work towards it.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. And I just want to say that Dr. Cohen, Nora Keno, the staff, they are phenomenal in trying to be transparent and relate when the bus is going to be late, on time. They respond to emails. Sherry from Betty Magdalena, everybody is phenomenal.
We're trying, communication.
We know there is an issue. But thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
I appreciate it. But I wanted to just make sure you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Terry Trig Scales, 85 Clark and Drive. I just wanted to highlight our Superintendent Moore. Yesterday, the West Orange African Heritage Organization held its annual Black History Month celebration at our new library. And there were two themes to the event. One was looking at historically black colleges and universities, and the other was Black firsts here in West Orange. And so along with Errol Scales, our superintendent Hayden Moore, not only was he recognized and celebrated, a student became him for a few minutes and addressed the audience. Is there video? I don't know. I'll have to check. But it was a wonderful event. And I want to encourage board members to please come out and participate in the West Orange African Heritage Organization's. We do wonderful things. We have a partnership with the school district. We do tutoring after school for our young ones. We have a Men Who Cook celebration. We just had a Den in Diamonds scholarship fundraiser. And we'd love to see board members come out and support the efforts of our organization. And thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. And I thank the West Orange African American Organization, Heritage Organization, for the honor. And it is always great that a community believes in you and gives you a chance to be first. But, you know, I do recognize that you could never be first without standing on the shoulders of giants. And I, and Errol Scales and Al Austin are those giants that I stood on. And Terry Scales, Trig Scales, by the way, as well as she has helped me, mentored me throughout my time as principal as well. So I do appreciate it very much, the recognition. But, you know, nothing, I hope the message to my students are nothing's done by yourself. And always pay homage to those that came before you because they did lead the path. And but I know that my students, especially my board liaisons over there, who I'm so proud of, will lead a brighter and better future than us. But at least we started it. And you guys will take it from there. And that's how I feel about my career. So thank you, Terry. Appreciate you.
All right, if there's no one else for public comment, we will move on to our resolutions. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items, A1 through A8?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody. I want to congratulate the following retirees. We have Michelle Frazee, who provided academic support at St. Cloud Elementary for her 28 years of service. Janet Camper, a social worker in special services for her 17 years of service. Wally Paul, a paraprofessional at BME LC in Washington for his 19 years of service. Vincenza Amabile, teaches Italian here at West Orange High School after 18 years of service. And finally, Sandra Stein, a clerical aide here at the high school, retiring after 20. Is to purchase books and our classroom materials at Kelly Elementary School. All right. Without any other discussion, Ms. Flowers, please take your call.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
All right. And finally, may I have a motion to approve reports, item D1?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to my board colleagues for all of that. Next up, we have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda item that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none?
Oh.
Yes.
President Rock, I just want to take this opportunity, if I may, also too, to acknowledge Ms. Catherine Connors for her fabulous work with our students in getting them prepared, getting them, advising them, doing all that she does with respect to our student organizations for this. We're here tonight. Don't know how you do it, Ms. Connors, but thank you so much. You're at every board meeting supporting students, at every board meeting supporting our student liaisons. And really, what you do is indicative of what all educators should do on behalf of students. So thank you. I just wanted to give that acknowledgement.
I can just add that our Black History Month dinner, I'm sorry, event, Ms. Connors also helped organize that and is so conscious of all that all our students need, the diversity of our students. So she's very special to us. So I appreciate you acknowledging her, and I will second that. Thank you, Ms. Connors, for all that you've done.
Well then, thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. on March 18, 2024. This meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.
All right.